Welcome, everyone, to our Mesa City Council meeting for Thursday, February the 24th. I believe we're broadcasting. Okay. We'll take it. You know, a little out of the ordinary, today, the country of Ukraine was invaded by Russia. And this, obviously, is a local government meeting, and we're concerned with the government of Mesa, Arizona, but I think we can't be oblivious to what's going on around us. This is a very scary thing that's happening in our world right now. It's upsetting the world order. It's a United States ally, democratically elected country, is being invaded. That's not good for any of us, and that's going to be, the impact of that will be felt in Mesa, Arizona. And we're in a less safe world today than we were. So I'm going to suggest that let's take a moment of silence and reflect on our situation, and perhaps, for those of you who are inclined, offer a prayer for a peaceful resolution. Thank you very much. Let's begin this meeting. Item, I will note for the record that all of our council is present. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for our February 28th regular council meeting. So let's go through that meeting, or that agenda. Mr. Brady, I know you do have a couple of presentations.
We do, but I just want to make sure the council's aware. Item number one, you will be appointing and swearing in David Allen, Chief City Magistrate. So you will be taking a vote on Monday. So I just want to make council aware of that.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Allen will be there to be sworn in on Monday evening.
That's wonderful. We'll look forward, and the plan is probably for me to do that, or we'll figure that out? Either myself, the clerk?
That was the assumption, yes.
Okay.
And then, yes, and we do, a little bit later, we don't have to worry, no, we do have a couple of presentations, one on the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, and one on the Red Mountain Soccer Field. So when we're ready for those, we'll be, we have staff here, we can do that, the mayor, if you want, whatever your preference.
Well, just so council knows, then, so that's items 5M and 5N.
Correct.
Staff has presentation on those items. Other questions on Monday's agenda? Mr. Thompson?
I have a question on 5J. What is our attrition on tires that we're spending nearly a million dollars a year on tires? When you calculate it out, 1,800 units by $980,000, that's $544 per vehicle per year. Are we going through and replacing $136 worth of tires on every vehicle every year?
Good morning. This maintenance contract is for the labor, for the tire repairs, so this services, the crews that come in and replace the tires on the wheels, do the safety checks throughout the week for the solid waste services. They measure the tire thickness, check the air pressure weekly on those, and then they mount and balance all the tires on all the wheels. So it's the services that they do for that. And on average, between flat repairs, road calls, and tire replacements, they do about 40 to 50 tires a day.
So are our employees not doing that on their walkarounds before they utilize the vehicle?
Yes, they're completed in the pre-trip.
So we're playing for it while our employees are doing it as well?
So, on the air checks, they do not do the air checks themselves. The employees, they check the condition of the tread themselves, they look at the wear bars on them, it'll tell you the thickness of the tire, and they look at the overall condition of them. They'll do the tire inspections weekly through the contractor.
So can we not save them $980,000 a year by giving our crews a $2 air check thing so they can check their tires themselves? I mean, a million dollars a year is a lot for, to pay a contractor to come out and inspect our tires.
Sir, the majority of this is for the replacements of the tires on the wheels.
But you're just giving, you're picking one part of that. It's more than just checking the air pressure, right?
Yes.
Okay, but then I go back to, are we replacing every single tire on every single unit at $136 per tire, per vehicle?
Well, listen, okay, we'll use the word "vehicle," but we're talking about some pretty heavy pieces.
Right, but I mean, you're talking about anything from, it was going, the council report says, 220 sedans, 350 police cars, 100 police vehicles, 400 light-duty trucks, 80 solid waste trucks, 8 sweepers, 50 medium-duty trucks, 200 heavy-duty trucks, 100 SUVs, 145 trailers, and 40 off-road plus loaders and backups. So we're replacing all those tires on every vehicle once a year?
Yes, the solid waste tires consume a lot of replacements on those tires. They're annually, or nightly, there are three technicians working on just the solid waste vehicles alone, replacing and fixing flat repairs nightly.
Man, that's a lot of money. A million dollars a year.
A lot of service. And there is an increase in the labor cost right now, too.
Okay. Seems a little extensive, though, for what we're getting. I don't know. I mean, my son buys his tires a discount tire, and I don't think he pays $136 a tire, but this is me.
Other questions? Mr. Freeman?
Well, to Kevin's point, you know, on my farm, when I call a tire reservice company to come out, it's like $150 to $200 just for the service call, let alone the cost of the tire. So, you know, if I have to replace a large tractor tire, it's $1,200 to $1,500 per tire, plus the service call. Now, you know, this brings in 1,800 units, so I can see where, you know, the cost, labor costs have increased, and that this, this is what it costs to run our fleet of so many different vehicles. And I know our fleet support being out there, the guys and gals there, they check their trucks, they make sure their tires are good, and I feel really safe in having a good tire on our equipment apparatus so that we don't have any flats, or we hurt anybody, and we're extremely safe with that. So, you know, I'm all in on the repair and maintenance, and if it costs $980,000 out of their budget, I'm good with that.
And this is competitively bid, it's not just...
But they're the sole bidder, I believe.
Right. Yeah, we look at it competitively. What we compare, even the sole bid, we'll look at what others are. And Mike, when we're saying we're repairing tires on a solid waste truck, when are they doing that?
They're doing it at nighttime.
Yeah, so this is...
When they're down, out of service.
Right, I mean, my point is you have to find labor, we have to even find our mechanics who are willing to show up at 10 o'clock at night, or whenever, I guess after 5, 6, whatever, to be able to come out and do this work, too. So it's a little unique in what we do.
Well, that's just my comment on it. So thank you for all you do. I know it's hard out there, and having the staff, and sometimes you're not trained to cover all those bases, and, you know, having a tire blowout happened to me one time carrying a heavy load, and it's treacherous, and you don't want to hurt anybody. So thanks.
Yes, sir. Okay. Other questions on Monday night's agenda?
Oh, are you going to bring up 4D? Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
From our agenda for Monday, I wanted to pull off item 4D, which is a liquor license for a convenience mart. In 2019, at the same location, we had an application for a liquor license, and we denied it at the time because of the heavy problems that we have at that corner. There's a Circle K directly on the south side, just across the street, immediately on the south side, and it has a high calls for service. I'm waiting for the report for the calls for service over the past few years since we looked at it, and a brief conversation with Fiesta PD, it sounds like that area is still a problem. Guerrero Park is only a short, like a minute walk from there. There's a heavily substance abuse, homelessness problems, a lot of calls continually throughout the year from surrounding businesses and residents in that area. I don't think having more liquor available in that corner is going to help the situation. So I, we received a couple of responses from a resident and a business, not wanting the liquor license approved again. So I'm pulling it off, and we'll continue to look at that, but at this point, I don't recommend a liquor license approval for that location.
Okay.
Since I have the floor, I just wanted also to have Beth come up and cover item 6E, the right-of-way improvements that we're making along Broadway Road and acquisitions, and what does that look like along the roadway? I assume maybe it looks kind of similar, like what we did on Mesa Drive, and the widening and taking a little bit, and fences along the residential area, or what does that look like? Or just the taking of, you know, to provide extra width, so we have the bike lanes and the improvements? Just an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, Beth. I'm going to have Kim start and explain the project and what the item is on the agenda.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, Beth. This item is for Broadway Road from Lesweare to east of Staple to Spur. It's for some additional easements, public utility facilities easements to accommodate new sidewalk moving back, temporary construction easements to help with the contractor to do the improvements, some right-of-way ADA compliance. We're doing ADA sidewalks around driveways and at corners for ADA ramps. And then we're also doing some underground utility work, and then reconstruction of the road. So this item before, on the agenda, is, we started making offers back, started the process in October of last year. There's been some recent offers made in January. We have got agreements with 62 property owners out of the 90. We anticipate more. We actually have staff out there now. We're continuing working with property owners. But we've reached a point where construction's to begin tentatively, is what we're told, is in the summer. And in order for us to ensure that we have all these easements and the right-of-way for the contractor to start, it does need the eminent domain process so we can get possession, put the money in the state treasure, and then continue to work with the property owners. Some owners have attorneys that they're reviewing the offers, but if we don't start now with this process, because it takes some time, we're not going to be able to meet the construction schedule.
And Kim, let's just talk a little bit, what that means is that we will set aside the funds for the purchase of the acquisition until we can come to a resolution on a pricing.
Correct.
So this way, we make sure that we're setting aside the funds through this process also.
So in order for us to receive possession, we have to put the offer amount, we have to put it in the Arizona State Treasure, and the owner can withdraw that. So you can't take land without compensating. And then we continue to work with the property owners, or their attorneys, to reach a mutually agreed upon price.
Can you review what the benefits are into the street improvements by taking that right-of-way?
Yes. So the right-of-way is actually narrow strips of land, it's not significant portions. We work pretty hard in the older parts of the city, or the more mature parts of the city. Broadway Road needs a refresh, I think we've all driven down it, and we would all agree on that. And this is a refresh project. We are going in, we're going to do new paving, we're adding, we're increasing the widths of the sidewalk to make it more walkable. We're going from 5 to 6 feet. We're putting in bike lanes, new curb gutter, some landscaping, so it's really kind of refreshing it, getting the pavement back up to condition, but also providing for some of the amenities, like a walkable sidewalk and bike lanes.
So, Kim, and I saw, I think, we reviewed this, we're talking about small strips typically in front of properties. We're not going and taking out, where people can still live in their homes, this is just needing a little strip on the front end to widen the curb and move the public right-of-way back a little bit. Is that fair?
That is correct. Yeah, that's correct.
What would you say the average would be, like a foot, two feet, something in there?
It ranges from 1 to 3 feet.
1 to 3 feet.
1 to 4 feet. And we're taking them by easement so that it doesn't have as big of an impact to the property. Should these owners come in later and want to do some redevelopment, or add to the property, it's based, your setback is based on your property line. We're not changing that property line. We're getting easements for the sidewalks.
So they'll still have use on the...
They will. We're trying to minimize as much as we can the impact to properties.
Well, I'm looking forward to having a bike lane and wider sidewalks. They are very narrow there. Sometimes there are utility poles within the narrow sidewalk, so it is not, it's not very walkable in some areas, especially if you had a wheelchair or stroller or something like that, it becomes very narrow. So I look forward to those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Council, we'll hear presentations on 5M and 5N. Anything else on Monday's agenda you'd like to ask some questions about? All right, to kick things off, I'm going to be declaring a conflict on 5M. I have a family member that works for this company, not in any way that's impacted by this project or related to this project, but just to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I will declare a conflict. So that means this item will come off of the consent agenda, and Vice Mayor, if I can ask you to conduct that item on Monday, please. So having said that, I'll refrain from any discussion on this item, but, Mr. Brady, should we start?
Yes, we'll invite Mr. Hassard to come forward. Chris Hassard.
Thank you.
Our Director of Water Resources. And Beth will join him.
Since we have this agenda item for pre-construction services for McCarthy to join the design effort for the Signal Butte Treatment Plant expansion, we thought it would be a good time to just do a refresher on the history of the plant and the service area. So this graph actually tells a few stories. If you look at the vertical axis, what that's representing is number of customers or connections, and of course, the x-axis is a timeline. So you can see, what really stands out with this graph is just the very robust and consistent growth that has happened in the Signal Butte service area since around 2007 and 2008. And most of that was driven by Eastmark and residential development. That's why it's a pretty, it's a pretty smooth curve. There was a lot of connections added each year, but it was pretty consistent over time. Another thing that is noteworthy is that in 2018, when the first phase of Signal Butte came online, and as a reminder, that's a 24 MGD facility, we were at a point, when it came online in July of that year, where it was already at maximum capacity. So we were running from day one at 24 MGD. And what's significant about that is ADQ has consistent guidelines where they advise municipalities, when you get to about 80% capacity of a facility, you should be in design, or should be considering design, and then when you get to about 90% of capacity for your plant, and that's water or wastewater, you should be in construction. So day one, we were already at 100% capacity, so the urgency was there. But it wasn't as simple as just starting design. This is a big project, so we had to work in our CIP and figure out how we could work this in with all our other projects, because it's a pretty significant cost. So we are under design right now, and we're approaching 30% design. What this contract with McCarthy will do, they were chosen through a qualifications-based selection process, is it will bring them into the design fold, so they will be part of the design team, they will lend their construction expertise to the design effort, they will assist with a better, tighter cost estimating as we go forward, which is especially important these days with inflation, supply chain issues, pressures on labor rates, all of that is significant, so it places the importance on really having a good, tight handle on costs. With that, I'm going to turn it over, well, yeah, I think I'm going to turn it over to Beth to talk about the upcoming GMPs that you will expect to bring with McCarthy.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. So in front of you today is what's called the pre-construction services contract, as Chris mentioned. Treatment plants are very specialized equipment with supply chains the way they are right now. We'll be coming back to you in August or September, after the summer break, with the first guaranteed maximum price contract. And that will be addressing what we think of as long lead items, some of the specialized treatment plant equipment. We want to get in line to get it manufactured, and we want to tie the prices down as quickly as we can. So that will be coming later this year, with the final GMP coming next spring. And then the plant, we are hoping to turn the water spigot on on February 2025 in that timeframe, before summer, the summer peak demands of 2025.
Right, and at that time, in 2025, we expect to be at our highest part of the season in July, seeing an average demand of probably about 27 MGD. So the plant, of course, as I explained, Phase 1 is 24 MGD, so we'll have to use our wellfield as backup in the peak summer months, when our demand is highest. Now, there is some good news long-term. 90% of the residential is built out in the Signal Butte service area. So there's only a small amount of residential left to fill in over time, and what we're looking at now is more attention to commercials, multifamily, of course, and industrial. There's development planned in and around the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, all throughout that part of the service area. We expect that by the, we will be at about 32 MGD, and I want to make sure I get the year rate for our projection. Yeah, actually, we plan to be about 32 MGD. I think I said 27 MGD, when the Phase 2 is complete in 2025, but we plan to be about 32 MGD. So the build-out will be 48 MGD, because the plant expansion is another 24 MGD, so we're adding 24 to the original 24. And that will be the last expansion, there's no more planned expansion to Signal Butte that will take care of all the demand, all the way to ultimate build-out.
And so, Mayor and Council, the good news in all this, too, is that as we were planning out this area and the growth has taken place, and we look at the utilization usage by the average customer in this area, it is significantly below our average. So the residents out here, through landscaping design, through efficiency of appliances, whatever, that number, on an average, is much less than most of the rest of the city. But this timeline is also very important, as I think Chris just alluded to, is that while we've been able to accommodate most of the residential growth, there's still some growth that happened inside the inner loop. But right now, we are, we need to keep moving forward to meet the demands of the commercial development that's underway right now, and meet those obligations to provide the water for those groups. So that's, that's what, timing is important, and staying on this timeline is important. Anything else do you guys want to cover, or just...
Nothing else to add, unless there's any questions. This last slide really is, it's a schematic from our design engineer, which shows the various existing processes and just the expansion that we're going to do. I would think the only thing noteworthy on this slide is, in the lower-left corner, is G, which is another 8-million-gallon reservoir we're building to go along with the expansion of capacity, we want to add our storage capacity as well.
So, I know some of you had the opportunity to tour the Signal Butte plant when we opened it up, so here we go, we need to continue. And this is our growth area, so it makes sense, this is just expected, this is what we've anticipated all along, so, but we are trying to be sensitive to both how fast we can literally engineer, design, you know, build these kind of projects, and also trying to fit it inside of our budget and our forecast out into the future, so all those come into play, and meeting the demands of our customers, so. All right.
I'm going to ask a question, at the risk of trying to figure, we have the central reuse pipeline that's going to go from the north to the south, right? So how does that line up with what we're doing here? Because aren't we bringing that water into this plant for reuse and treatment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Doug, that's a great question. So the reuse pipeline is adding to our reuse system, and it all feeds into the exchange agreement we have with the Gila River community. So what that does is just increases the amount of recycled water we give them, which in turn increases the amount of CAP credits that we get. And why that's significant is this expanded Signal Butte is needed, because as our portfolio increases and the demand goes up, we have to have more treatment capacity to be able to run through and treat that additional CAP supply.
Right, Chris, physically, let's just physically, because I think she asked, the way she asked the question, I think it's a great question. The central pipe is not bringing reuse into this plant. It eventually will get it down to almost, I don't know, directly south, but down to Greenfield, right?
Right.
And then we'll take it through there and run that clear down to the Gila River community down below. But by doing that, that gives us access to more CAP water, which is where this water, the water that goes into this plant comes from, and it's, how far is the iron, how far is the canal from this plant?
It's a couple miles.
Yeah, due east of here. So it's a trade-off of water in different physical locations, but overall, it benefits, we get more rights to the water that this plant accesses to, but it's not, it's not physically the same water that's coming down that central reuse pipe, if that makes sense.
Okay, so that water and the central reuse is not feeding into this plant?
No.
I was wondering how the timelines were. Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item, Council? All right, so this will come off the consent agenda, just because I'm a problem on this...
Yes, sir. We will do that. We'll take that off.
Thank you very much. 5N?
Switch it out here?
Park expansion?
Yeah.
Is it this one?
We're going to ask Mr. Lund to give his presentation. He's been very much involved in this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we have this morning, before you, Council, the first GMP for Red Mountain Park expansion. And so we thought we'd just do a review of everything that's planned for that project, starting with Beth describing the contract that is on your agenda.
So, good morning again. We've been busy trying to get projects out right now. So the Red Mountain Project is scheduled to get 10 new fields, soccer fields, multipurpose, multi-athletic fields, four new baseball, softball fields across Brown Road to the north, two new restrooms will be, and Andrew will be talking about a little bit relocating the disc golf course and some of the equestrian trails. The project itself will still be leaving some acreage out there, about 90 acres, I believe, of the desert environment. But right now, what we're bringing to you is our first guaranteed maximum price contract with Valley Rain to start the construction. We need to get in while the canal is dried up to make a connection to the water system to provide water to our fields and get a pump station installed, as well as we want to start early site grading. We always have to time our fields with grow-in time before the season, so we want to get the fields started and graded so we can get the grass planted and get it growing while we finish up other things. We'll be bringing a second GMP, a final GMP in the future, probably in the spring of next year, and we're looking at a project completion in about two years, the spring of 2024.
So as a reminder, this was part of the 2018 bond program that voters approved that year, and there were several questions on that ballot, which has led to a little bit of confusion on this. So I just want to point out, this was the parks bond portion that was approved by voters. There was another question on that ballot that was Mesa Plays, which added additional fields to the Red Mountain Park site, that was not approved by voters, different funding source. And so we've had a lot of questions come up from the citizens, and we've had several public meetings explaining, this component, what is approved by voters, is developing another section of Red Mountain Park. It's our largest park in our park system, but there's still, in this area west of the 202, about 90 acres of desert land that is not fully developed. That's where the, and I have a slide a little bit later, that's where the disc golf courses are, that's where the equestrian users go out and ride in the open desert in there. And so that is still a substantial amount of desert land within the park that is not impacted by this development.
Andrea, are you going to talk a little bit in a later slide about the, where this, how we acquired this land? Or do you want to just give a brief, because you're the in-house expert on that, so...
I can. This is an interesting parcel, because it started out many, many years ago as a county park, and it's Bureau of Land Management recreational designated land. And so we have gone through a process over many decades here of developing this into a city park, but it is still governed by land use restrictions by the Bureau of Land Management. It has to be used for public recreation purposes. And we're very careful about even how we bring in vendors to the site, because the city has to operate it, it cannot be privatized, and, in order to comply with those restrictions on the, from the BLM. BLM. So this part of it is under a patent from the BLM. There is an additional piece of Red Mountain Park. The whole thing was connected before the freeway went through. So on the east side of the freeway, there's more land that's designated as Red Mountain Park for future development. And that is a mix of patent land and leased land with Bureau of Land Management. But all of it has to be managed for public recreational purposes. So looking a little bit in-depth about the site plan that we have in the GMP, as Beth said, this is starting the process on how we're going to water the fields and starting mass grading. But there's a youth baseball softball quad that'll be on the north side of Brown. That's the next slide? Yep. North side of Brown, just west of the existing softball complex. So you have the freeway, you have the three baseball adult-size fields, the four softball fields, and then this will add youth-size quad for baseball and softball between the softball complex. It basically tucks into the access road to the water treatment plant. And then on the south side of Brown, so this is directly east of the existing park development, we are in design here for the 10 soccer fields. So these are natural turf fields, not artificial turf. They have LED lights on both sides of the road. But 10 full-size fields, two of them are connected. You can see right in the middle as a flex field that allows us to have some flexibility with other sports that use even larger footprints than soccer does, like lacrosse. And then both sides have restrooms added. There's access to the existing restroom that's just east of the lake. But ultimately, if you were part of those early meetings, we were trying to figure out if we needed to expand Red Mountain Lake in order to water these fields, and we found we did not. That's why we're starting this GMP now, to tap into the water supply in the canal. But we're able to do that without touching the existing lake. And then there have been some questions, too, that disc golf folks really love playing out there. There's two courses that were built by volunteers a few years ago, and it extends into where the soccer fields are going. And so we found we needed to relocate a few holes for the two different disc golf courses. One of them's targeted for a higher level of play. You have to be more precise when you're throwing your disc. The other one's more recreational-based. And what we heard from that group was that they really didn't want to lose any holes. So -- because we had contemplated maybe taking one of the courses out completely or making it a nine-hole course instead of an 18-hole course. So we worked with that group, came up with a plan to keep both courses full 18 holes. One's directly east of the Red Mountain Center and only has a couple of holes that need to relocate baskets. And the other one goes around the existing park area in that there's a lot of desert vegetation north of the lake and wrapping around. So all of that will stay, just get slightly reconfigured. And it seemed to meet everybody's needs for disc golf. And we're also able to do that in a way that we can keep those courses open while we're in construction. And then the equestrian use, there are stables in this area. They've been using this land for years just to go out and ride their horses. We continue to allow that. We just relocated a little piece of their designated trail off of the soccer area, but it's still there and still designed in a way that the disc golfers are not throwing their discs toward the horses. So that's how that all works together.
That a problem?
Can you tell me a little more about the get the disc golf course? I mean, I know there's a lot of people very passionate about that in our community and enjoy it quite a bit. Is this something that it -- and I confess, I have not been out there and had this experience. I've had people invite me, and I will take them up on it. But was this initially something done informally, or has this always been an official City of Mesa improved disc golf course? Or is it something less than that?
Sure. Mayor, the volunteers that we work with, we have another disc golf course at Emerald Park with a very active volunteer group. And so they approached us many years ago about expanding into this area and making it available for disc golf. So we had worked with them. They found a grant, Timken Foundation, I think it was, that helped fund it. And then we use civilian conservation corps labor to work with the volunteers, and we built it with them that way. So it's not a fully-designed amenity, like we brought in a design consultant and a general contractor. But they worked out a layout for both courses that seemed to satisfy what everybody was looking for. But it is one of the only desert courses in the valley, both of them. Most of them end up on grass.
My thought is, it seems like a great transitional temporary use, you know? Rather than have this property just sit ignored, you know? I love the idea that we're using it productively while we wait for future generations to figure out what the long-term development of the property will be. And I know it needs to be recreational, but -- so I guess my question is, should we be dedicating a few more additional city resources just to make it functional and safe and something that's -- that we can be a little bit proud of? Or -- and I guess I'll answer that question when I go out myself and look at it, but...
Yeah, I think if disc golfers want to kind of keep the envi -- there's not a lot of improvements necessarily, right? So it's not...
And Mayor, I wouldn't say that it's not an unsafe area. It's raw desert interspersed with teapads and baskets. But it's very functional for the game.
People don't need to walk, you know, across washes. Or I mean, I guess that's my question, is it's safe to go out for a walk there?
Oh, yeah.
People with limited...
It is. And we try to keep folks out of the thicker desert brush where -- because we do have snakes and other creatures that like to live out there, too. It's beautiful desert. So everything's laid out in a way that you're not having to get into those heavier vegetated areas unless you have an errant disc.
Great. I know there are some questions. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Andrea, for the presentation and as well as you, Beth. They've been real lively, you know? I've attended several presentations. There's a lot of opinions in terms of how we should develop the park, and your staff has done a tremendous job. One of the issues has to do with lighting. How are we going to take care of the lighting issue? Because they don't want lighting spilled over into their homes.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, these are the LED lights that have a very strong cutoff. So if you stand next to a soccer field just off of the line of the field, you're back in darkness. This technology of lighting is very effective, and it's the same lighting that we have at the Fiesta Baseball Softball Youth Quad. We have it at Eagles in the soccer fields. And we do that because those fields come up very close to the homes, and those lights are very effective at shutting -- at having a strong cutoff right at the property line or, in this case, at the field line.
In this case, we're much further away from any residential than we are at those other examples you just gave. So we think we'll minimize that quite a bit.
And that is true. It's a little bit more of a distance from the residence on 80th, looking east. I appreciate you moving the disc course because that -- those players are just happy. You know, they're -- they really want to play. They want the raw land. They like the natural habitat. I -- to me, it's like, I wouldn't go in there, but they're happy with it. So -- and there's a lot of people that ride horses around that area, and they really wanted to protect and preserve this area for horseback riding. So I appreciate that you did that. But I did want to remind viewers that this is not Mesa Plays. And so there's some disinformation out there that this is Mesa's plays, that we're expending more money that that was bonded for. That is incorrect information. We are only using voter-approved dollars that they voted on 2018. So the funding for this is voter-approved bonds. So we want to make sure we get that right information out there. It is not Mesa Plays. That was a whole different project. This is a city project, expanding the fields in that area, something that obviously our community voted on. So they obviously want it, so we appreciate that. I'm looking forward to seeing this act when it actually is realized, and best of luck. So those are my comments.
Ms. Spilsbury and Mr. Freeman?
I thank you for this. I have sat at soccer fields and know how many people come to those games. And so the parking, to me, just doesn't look sufficient for those mornings when there's a billion people there watching games. So is there overflow? Is there -- I mean, what's the parking situation?
I don't think you had a -- show the graph with just the parking, because it kind of does go -- wraps around the...
It just looks like a line, so that that's not that many...
There's...
So Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, there is quite a bit of parking in here and does still take advantage of the existing parking lots that aren't at capacity. And so generally speaking, we plan for enough parking to handle teams that are playing and new teams that are coming in for the next round of games without creating a parking backup. And so there are parking spots on the soccer complex, for example, that go essentially all the way around. So we're adding spots to the north and east and a little bit to the south. And then there is still access from the existing parking lots that aren't full, that were there for the original -- the park development area. And to the north side of Brown, the new parking lot around the quad, plus the existing ones for the softball and baseball. Again, they're designed to be able to handle teams coming and going and not have folks backing up. And then we lined up the driveway between the existing softball complex and the new soccer complex for exiting there. You can exit at the light, for the existing light over to the west where the park development is. And then there is still a way to exit to the south, tying into the driveway next to Red Mountain Center.
And then is there parking also to the west that's like shaded out? Is there -- is that parking right there, too?
That's what -- you could use that for...
That's existing parking.
Yeah, it's existing, but we're...
That would also work for this. Like that would be that walkway.
Yes, the walkways and the driveways all tied together.
Okay, I've just been to way too many, like volleyball tournaments, wherever, where you go to these places, and then you can't find a place to park, and you have to, you know? Anyways, it's my biggest complaint about those.
I think this park probably will have the best available parking in any...
It's hard to tell how many spots that is on here, so...
Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, I'll answer that question. We plan for 60 spaces per field on these sites, which at -- with what, 10, 14 fields? That's 840 spaces. And that only accounts for using 11 of the existing spaces. So primarily, we're building over 800 spaces, I think.
Wow, okay, great.
Did I do the numbers right?
I think so.
Something like -- I won't check it.
Okay, I won't check my math.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you for your presentation. Recently, I was at Eagles Park at the rec center, and the lights were on, to your point, and there was very little bleed over. So I'm looking forward to those lights on the north center street.
You'll have those, too.
But my question was on the quad, the new baseball quad. How was the interaction with the neighborhoods to the west of there in the parking area? Did they interact? I know we got some pushback on some emails, you know, in the past, but did they have some input in the -- not necessarily the design, but the landscaping and buffering between, say, Glen Cove, Gary and Grandview Streets?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, they were part of those. We had several public meetings about this, and we did add additional landscaping and shifted the fields to the east as far as we could and still fit everything in and have the right drainage and everything. But the landscaping in there is to help buffer that.
Yeah, great.
And you still have the driveway to the water treatment plant that has extra space.
Yeah, we have a buffer, the road going into our own facility.
Yeah, good. So with this being Bureau land and the land use being obviously recreational, do we still have the existing ones, fields to the east of this new one? That's correct?
Oh, yeah, those are...
The ballparks that are still there?
Oh, yeah, they're very active, yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. That's my questions. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
So the overall expansion here, how many acres is that?
That we're building out or what's left or what's...
On Slide 2, the, you know, the entire park area, Red Mountain Park expansion and the green area.
Okay. Oh, okay. What that total acreage is?
Just... So I know the desert area we're leaving is 90 acres, and we're only taking up about a third of the desert acres, so that's probably around 30 acres or so. Is that right?
I don't know what that number is off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't think it was more than 30, right? I thought it was...
Okay.
We'll get it. We can get that.
So it's around roughly about a third of the entire...
Yeah, we're only developing about a third of the desert area that exists today, and I know we have 90 acres left over when we're done.
Okay, okay. And how many soccer fields do we have at the north center facility that's being built?
How many are going to be built there?
There are five at north center.
Five, okay, great. Thank you.
No pickleball.
How do the existing soccer fields? I think we've all been to the existing soccer fields, and you know that if you have multiple kids or grandkids, you're sometimes you're going from one field to another and keeping eyes on... I mean, how do the new fields relate to the existing fields? Because it's the Red Mountain Multi-Gent Center's in between them. But I mean, are they -- if I'm, you know, with a bunch of kids, is it the -- how connected are those fields? I mean, am I going to go from one game on, you know, on the Sun Valley Road side, and then I have to, you know, 15 minutes from now, I need to be with a kid on the... Can I get there from here, you know, kind of a...
Mayor, there are walkways that connect them.
Okay.
It'd be a very large tournament that would use 16 fields. So generally, it'd probably be different groups that are booking the use at the different sides of Red Mountain Park. But there are walkways, not driveways, that connect those. It is possible that you would pick a parking spot kind of to the south of the new soccer fields, and then you'd be pretty much in the middle of the two sides.
But to your point, these are both so large that probably at an event, you're not going to be going from the north fields to the south fields. You're going to be...
Unless it were a larger regional-type tournament.
Okay.
So Mayor and Council, this Saturday, we're having a city employee...
Spring into...
Bring into fitness out at Red Mountain. So you're welcome to join us as we all run around the park on Saturday. So I get your first...
Bring my horse.
Fitness for your horse, I guess.
Thank you for the invitation. All right, this is very exciting. Councilman, any additional questions on this? So this is on -- this is Agenda Item 5N. We'll leave it on the consent agenda unless somebody takes it off, but this is exciting. And thank you to the voters for endorsing this, and I know our youth sports folks are going to be very excited when this comes online. All right, thank you, ladies. Council, any other questions regarding Monday's agenda? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Item 2A. This is a presentation and to provide final funding recommendations, CDBG, Home, ESG and Human Services Program funding. Michelle and Ruth, welcome.
Good morning. Today, I will be presenting on the federal and local funding recommendations for fiscal year 22, '23. I have Ruth Geese, Community Services Director, with me, so she's here to answer any questions So today, we'll be discussing the federal and local funding resources and requesting City Council review, modify and/or approve the recommendations that were included in the agenda. And the funding recommendations and the annual action plan will be brought to City Council on consent on April 18. Because a significant portion of the housing and community development funds that the city receives fund programs and services that are related to addressing homelessness, we are following a housing path to recovery. And the funding recommendations for these programs and services fall in line along that path. And they also align with the Mesa Strategic Plan. And the Housing Path to Recovery is really a systematic approach.
Michelle, could you speak to the microphone? I can't hear you.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Old ears.
Okay. The Housing Path to Recovery is a systematic approach to connect persons who are experiencing homelessness to different resources and with the goal of getting them shelter all the way to self-sufficiency. So on this next slide, you can see the different paths to recovery. And although they are individual, they really intertwine in between each other. The first housing path is the emergency and recovery, which also includes jobs, and that includes our shelter, short-term housing, housing, rapid rehousing and support services. Then we move on to the bridge to success and affordable rental, which includes transitional housing, rapid rehousing, as well as some of the rental assistance programs, like the Housing Choice Voucher Program and Emergency Rental Vouchers. And finally, independence, which would include housing stability, family self-sufficiency, and eventually renting to homeownership, possibly. and eventually renting to homeownership possibly. The city helps to facilitate local collaboration and determine priorities for funding each year. And these programs and services provide assistance to low and moderate income persons in the community. And the programs and services are funded to eligible projects that meet the specific strategic priorities. So for our annual funding process, HUD provides annual grants, and they're based on a formula to cities and states and counties to develop viable communities and to administer core city programs. And then also to provide funding to nonprofit agencies to provide services in the community. The programs must meet regulatory requirements and eligible activities, and so we look at that when we're evaluating the applications. So we'll move on to the actual estimated funding allocations. So for fiscal year 2223, the city anticipates receiving just over $4.2 million in CDBG funds, plus any reprogrammed funds from prior projects that didn't go to contract. So we have a total of $7.4 million for core programs and services for nonprofits. With CDBG, we have a 15% public service cap, so 15% of the annual allocation can only be used for the public services. And the program administration, the city retains 20% to, to administer all of the CDBG grants. And the remaining 65% of the allocation can go to non-public service activities, which include housing rehabilitation, which is one of our core programs, public facility improvements, as well as construction. The next funding source we have is our Home Investment Partnership Program, and we anticipate receiving just over $1.5 million. These funds complement and support other programs in the community, and there are specific eligible categories, which include homebuyer activities, rental housing and tenant-based rental assistance. So it's a shorter term, about two years, to get people back on their feet to move into permanent housing. For emergency solutions grant, this program is solely to address homelessness and assist persons experiencing homelessness, $346,000. With this particular grant, a maximum of 60% of the allocation can go to shelter services. And this grant engages persons who are homeless, living on the street, as well as rapid rehousing, homeless prevention and emergency shelter. And our final program is our Human Services Programs, and the city provides funding for these programs through both the local general funds, as well as ABC or a Better Community Donation Program through the utility billing. These programs include essential services to address crisis, basic needs, emergency shelter, food and academic enrichment and other critical community needs. Just a quick overview on the funding process timeline. So this is a lengthy process each year. As we're concluding, we're starting the next process. We have our funding kickoff, it was in October, and that's for all of the agencies to come and learn about the different programs and grants, as well as we had an orientation with internal departments for what other programs and services we could fund. Then the applications were open October 4th through November 4th and provided technical assistance pretty much throughout the month of October. In that process, the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board has a large role in reading and evaluating the applications, as well as scoring a portion of each application. The agencies did present to the Housing Community Development Board on December 6th and December 9th, and we had one-on-ones with all the council members here in the month of February. In determining the eligible activities and the recommendations, we really look at the goals and priorities, priorities that are presented to the agency at the beginning of the kickoff, so that they're well aware. We look at the needs, such as the homelessness, food, basic needs. And then there's a combination of scoring for the Housing Community Development Advisory Board and staff scoring. And once we have those scores, then those agencies are ranked according to score, and that's how we start with our allocations. So we'll move on to the actual funding recommendations, and we'll start with CDBG Public Services. The tentative recommendations for public services would recommend seven agencies, and that is the 15% of the allocation, which is just over $600,000.
So Michelle, you're capped. We're capped at.
We are capped.
That amount of money that can go for public services.
Correct, that is correct. So if you have any questions on this particular slide, I can go through it individually if you'd like. We have a new leaf providing shelter at La Masita, as well as housing support services. CAS, this is at their Phoenix campus, but this is for their case management. They do serve Mesa residents. In fact, last year, they served a little over 15% of what they had anticipated. We have community bridges for navigation services, as well as their outreach and crisis stabilization, which really helps those first responders. Copa Health for their homeless day center and community courts. They have navigators both at Paz de Cristo and then in the courts. And finally, Family Promise of Greater Phoenix, they are newer to Mesa, but not a new agency, and they do provide shelter through a collaboration with different congregations.
Now, Michelle, is this, Mayor, I think this is the one we met, is this the one Ruth we met out at the?
At the Love Your City event.
Love Your City event.
Yes.
Do you recall that, Mayor? We were making the bets.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. So this isn't the I help folks that line up at Paz, this is a different provider.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember those congregations?
I do, yeah. It's a faith-based organization. I know Mr. Freeman had a question.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Domestic Violet's Court, remind me which category they fall into?
Councilmember Freeman, it is into the Human Services Funding.
Okay, so that's later in the presentation.
It'll be the last one.
That's where they applied, that's correct.
Right, I couldn't remember where they fell in there because I didn't see the, the applicants that did not meet the criteria, so, sorry to ask a question, but we'll wait till that comes up, thanks.
Okay, no problem.
I just want to underline what you said earlier, you've met with all of our council. I think we all had pretty long, detailed discussions about this, so just, this is not the first time that we're seeing this, and, and we appreciate the, the work that's gone into this before and, and after this, this presentation.
Thank you very much. It is always challenging because there are so many great programs that apply and always more than what we have of funding available for. Okay, so we'll move on to the next funding, which is the CDBG Non-Public Services. So this is more of the bricks and mortar, our core city programs, Housing Rehabilitation Program is one of those, as well as doing facility improvements in the community. We are recommending funding for three specific projects, which would include Housing Rehabilitation Program, Playground Improvements for ADA Accessibility and Shelter Improvements at CAS. So in this category, just wanted to mention, this is the most difficult category to facilitate activities. There's multiple federal regulations, and so when we're vetting these applications, we need to take those into consideration.
Michelle, why don't you talk a little bit about what the rehab program is all about? Because it's a big chunk of money, but it represents a lot of different, you know, deliveries.
Absolutely, Chris. So the Housing Rehabilitation Program actually has two specific programs. One is an emergency repair program, and that's to help folks, all owner occupied housing, to help folks who have emergency situations, such as their air conditioning in the summer quits working, or they have, you know, electrical issues or plumbing issues, so something that's affecting the immediate livability of the home. That's one of our most popular programs. We have such an increase over the last year and a half in calls for the emergency program. We can also do ADA accessibility improvements, so if somebody needs their doors widened or ramp installed, we can do that through the program. And that is a grant, so they do not have to pay that back. And then the second component of our housing rehab program is our larger comprehensive program. It looks at all the major systems in the house. It can do roofing, plumbing, electrical, cabinetry, so really taking maybe not so much of a sanitary and safe living condition and really turning that into long-term, sustainable, affordable housing.
Michelle, how are these cases referred to? I mean, it says City of Mesa, but we're obviously contracting all this out. So how do we get the information about the need for someone to get an ADA ramp or something like that?
So I will tell you, we do pretty much no advertising, other than on our website, and we still get multiple, multiple calls. A lot of it is word of mouth, so neighbors, they might, you know, ask, hey, how did you get your air conditioning replaced? And they'll refer them to our program. With the contractors, so we have a list of licensed bonded insured contractors, and we go through a procurement for each and every project. So the lowest bidder gets the project and works with the homeowner to complete those repairs, and then the contractor's paid directly. So there's a lot of intricacies in the program, but it's an excellent program, and it really helps to have folks maintain and stay in their homes, especially in the kind of housing market that we're in today.
And these, again, anybody who applies for this still has to be CDBG, they have to meet the eligibility under CDBG as far as income and living within that census tract, correct?
It is citywide. So for this program, it is citywide. They have to be income eligible and have to have lived and owned their home for at least a year.
Okay, so if they're outside the, what we call the designated CDBG eligible area, but they meet the income area, they can be, they can be qualified?
Yes, correct.
So sometimes, I'm sure, Mayor and Council, you may have, get calls or hear of those situations, so this is a program that allows us to quickly respond to address those situations.
Well, what's the utilization? I mean, I realize we're not advertising, and maybe that's because we have, exceeds the supply.
Their experience, I think, has been almost every year where you.
We have been increasing funding over the last two and a half years, three years since I've been here. Last year, we did approximately 60 emergency projects, and we're on track this year to do over 100. And so that's quite a bit, especially in the summertime, it gets real, real busy. In fact, last year, we had to take some unprogrammed dollars and add it to our budget, otherwise we would have had to cut off services mid-year. And then for our full rehabs, we do anywhere from seven to 12 rehabs, depending on the cost of each one.
So this is one of the way, it's a large amount of dollars, but it's probably the most efficient way for us to spend dollars that we have, you know, we have this whole spending ratio we have to come up against. This kind of lets us get those monies quickly in because it is, we're administering it so we can comply with all the rules and regulations by HUD, so.
Thank you, Mr. Haredia.
Just a quick question, is there a waiting list for this program? Or how do we, how do we work with individuals if there is? Or if not, how do we advertise, maybe advertising it or?
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Haredia, we do have a waitlist for the major program, and right now, we have about 15 folks on the waitlist. So we should get through those pretty quickly. If we feel that we're not getting enough applications in, we can certainly do some advertising. For the emergency program, it's first come, first served. Obviously, we kind of prioritize the emergency, so if we have somebody, you know, who doesn't have an air conditioner in the summer and somebody that needs a lock repaired, sorry, a lock repaired on their door, we would prioritize those.
And then you said, majority of funds probably go to the larger projects, which is not the emergency, though you help more on the emergency side for more residents? But what's a breakdown, just percentage-wise, each of the programs? Is it like a 60/40 or?
So I would say, actually, the emergency program probably spends more than the rehab program, even though they're all smaller projects, there are more, they can be anywhere from $3,000 to $15,000, depending on, you know, what type of repairs. If someone has to have a complete roof, re-roofed and have air conditioning as well, that would be up towards the $15,000.
Okay.
So I'd probably say it's a 70/30.
70/30, emergency?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on, on this slide?
On the rehab program, it's, it's a great program. However, just looking back on some notes, we're doubling our allocation from last year, right?
Correct, that is correct.
And we feel confident that that's adequate?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we actually had to add $600,000 last year to our allocation of 1.5. And the other two components that are really rising the cost is the cost of construction has gone up since pandemic. And we also have to do some relocation for lead-based paint, and so when we're doing our major rehabs, that cost has increased as well.
Okay. I have one additional question, I'll go ahead and ask, I've been debating. So on the applications, and you rank them and everything, and then you have to choose who's going to get the funding and such. Why doesn't that go through the CCD committee and just go from, you know, direct to council individually? We don't have an opportunity as far as publicly posted applications to review that?
Not sure.
Okay, so we have the results of what the recommendation is, but we don't have the list, other than if we ask for it, about what the applications are in a public setting.
Okay, I'm not, so you want all of the applications? I guess the point, we have a, there's a committee that council's already appointed, they see everything, right? They vet through the entire application process and score all the applications. That's back on the first, earlier slides, the Housing Community Development Advisory Board, appointed by council, does that. And then the agencies make their own presentations.
That is correct. So after they submit their applications, the Housing Board will look at each one of them, and there are specific scoring criteria and questions. And then they have an opportunity to hear the presentations, and they're all public meetings. Second Tuesday of every month, we have our meetings. And after they hear the presentations, they will score the applications, and then those come to us. And we are scoring a component of the applications more for eligibility, meeting federal requirements, agencies' capacity. And so those two scores are put together and averaged, and that's how we come up with the final application score.
So we bring to council that recommendation?
Which is right now. So we see the recommendation.
From the two, from really the Community Advisory Board and the staff? That's correct.
Vice Mayor Duff, in addition, in the past, we have had, where we come before, a CCD meeting to delve into what we're doing today in a little bit more detail. This year, it was a little bit different. We did not have an official CCD meeting, but rather, we met with the CCD members individually. That was just simply because of commitments of council with other things that were going on. But we can definitely incorporate adding that CCD like we have in the past to make sure that there's yet another time to go into more detail.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back over the minutes to the advisory board, but I'm just saying the information that is presented to the council members individual or the committee individually, those application priorities or all the options are not in a public setting, right? I mean, other than the advisory board, but are they posted?
Oh, all the applications? I don't know.
Not the applications, but there's a spreadsheet.
A spreadsheet that shows who's been approved and who wasn't approved.
And how much they applied for and who's getting it and.
Well, certainly, everything you have today is posted.
Like all the people who didn't get approved, right? On the spreadsheet, it shows, this only shows what they're proving.
Right, because we bring you the recommendation.
Yeah, so is that out there anywhere, is what you're saying?
Oh, we could, I mean, we could put it out there, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, it's not something we typically post, but if agencies ask for it, we absolutely provide it, but we can do that.
And you had said, you reach out to each of the organizations to make sure they understand why they weren't funded and that they know, like, they're not finding out right now that they didn't get awarded or whatever, so.
Right.
So there's a big outreach for that.
Yes, so we actually, we send out letters to all the agencies and let them know what the tentative recommendations are. So either they were tentatively recommended or not recommended for funding, and then on some of the larger projects, contacted some of those agencies to discuss, for example, child crisis.
And we, and we also, it's important, too, we've had this conversation over the years with council, because we've run into challenges with agencies who want to apply for CBG, and then they just, they can't manage it, right? They just not have the capacity. So when, Michelle, we're all looking at this, we don't just look at it as just CDBG and ESG and the city's general fund contribution. We try to look at it across that whole spectrum. We try to figure out where, if they're, if they're, it's an eligible use, and it, and we think it rises to the level that needs to be scored, we also try to manage kind of like what's best type of funding source for those projects, too. So we don't look at this as just isolated in each one of them. We kind of look across the entire funding source, because frankly, there are some agencies, they may have a really good program, but they just don't have the capacity or experience to handle CDBG dollars. And so we'll maybe recommend them somewhere else. Now, our large agencies see that, they know they're probably going to get CBG funding, and we try to manage that out. But we're all, so we're trying, there's a lot of multiple things going on at the same time and trying to balance out meeting the goals, but also getting the money spent and being spent in compliance. And as the council knows, we have had problems with that. We continue to have problems with agencies that are under scrutiny by the federal government, and we are having a hard time trying to make sure, we're, hard time, we're being very focused on making sure any applicant that you give new dollars to, that they can spend it and that they have a project that can be delivered in a very quick period of time and can meet all the clients. And some of them just frankly, and we get it, because it's not their fault, but the rules are very, what's the appropriate word? Difficult?
Very difficult.
They're very intense, you know, with environmental, environmental clearances, having to pay specific wages for contractors, which some of them can't do, having matches of their own. So we try, all that is kind of flowing through this analysis. So, but we'll be glad to put, I think all the agencies know if they didn't get it in Y, but we'll be glad to post that. That's just, was just, you know, I don't know if we want to, if council wants to see that, we can put it out there. That's not a problem.
And Vice Mayor, I just wanted to mention, on the funding recommendations that were presented at the one-on-ones, those did have all of the agencies, so it showed who was being recommended and who wasn't. And then we go over, you know, those specific reasons on those agencies.
You didn't make this presentation, but you provided that.
Correct, correct, yes. And for the CDBG non-public services, as I mentioned, those are the most difficult projects and the most risk for the city. And so we really have to look at the feasibility of the project, as well as, does it meet a national objective and an eligible activity? And can they administer all the different federal regulations? Because it's not just CDBG regulations, it's all those other cross-cutting ones that Chris just mentioned.
So I'm asking, just for transparency reasons, if we don't have a CCD, if we have a CCD meeting, all those documents are posted publicly, right? This time, we just did individual meetings, so we skipped that process of posting those documents and just went directly to the recommendations where we are today.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is agendized for, for final approval, right? I mean, is that, or is this?
Mayor, it's this whole process where the council kind of has to give its nod, and then we continue through the process to the public.
April 18th is when it goes on the agenda.
Yeah, then we come back for the formal acknowledgement. But it's just, I think there's always this issue about making changes from council after this point, right? So that's why we've done all of the public process, all of the community outreach, and really, this is the public notice part of this after a decision today.
And the funding recommendations, which are included in our annual plan that goes to HUD, that has a 30-day comment period, so the public can comment on anything in that plan, which includes the agencies funded and where we're spending our dollars.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so to this point in all the conversation, I like seeing those applicants who were not awarded, you know, the funding recommendations for my, you know, because as a council, we have the ability to tweak some of the funding and, you know, suggest some funding for some of these agencies that may, you know, that didn't get it, and for whatever reason, they didn't score as high to receive it. So I like the transparency of seeing those applicants, so that maybe as a council, we can decide, maybe we'd like to shift some funding over here to one agency or another based on their, you know, our preferences or their needs. So I'll wait till the end of the presentation, because I do want to make a suggestion on that area.
You saw those in the individual presentation, though, right?
I did, but they're not here.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
For the agencies that were not recommended for funding, we do have some information that I provided to Mr. Freeman.
Does this just have everything for all?
It does. So there's two copies. The first copy is sorted alphabetically, the second copy is by funding source, whichever is easier for you to read.
We, I don't think we've ever done this before, because we've had the one-on-ones with council, and so we, I don't think that that's been...
Do you want it?
No, I've already seen it.
Yeah, I've seen it, too. All right, so I'm sorry, that's, we're, we're making you go through this very slowly and laboriously, but I keep, unless there's another question, please proceed.
Okay, no problem. So we'll move on to the next one here, which is our home funding. With this program, we did not get very many applications. We are recommending funding for the rental and utility deposit program. There were applications for tenant-based rental assistance. However, we are currently under contract with those same agencies. So once we finish those contracts, which are two years, then we could provide additional funding. Our next one is our emergency solutions grant, and recommending three activities to provide shelter services, mobile medicine outreach, medical services, and rapid rehousing. And so there were five applicants in this category. It is such a small dollar amount, so it does become a little challenging to allocate here. And so the last one is human services, so I have two slides here. Again, I just wanted to remind the council that the human service applications, as far as for funding, were based on the priorities of homeless activities, crisis needs, food and basic needs, youth services and education, as well as health services, workforce development, and tax and legal assistance. So that's kind of how we prioritized the agencies. As you saw on the spreadsheets, they were color-coded by the different categories. And so we are recommending the agencies that are on this slide and then the following slide. I can go through them individually if you'd like, or if you'd just like to take a moment to look through them. This is $620,000 of recommended funding for ABC and Human Services.
Now, this pot of dollars isn't under the federal process, right? This is the general fund. So there isn't that same decision we're making today, you know, is going to lock it in. That'll happen when you adopt the budget in May, so. But we put these together, we, council's always asked us to put these all together because we are looking at agencies that are applying for similar programs across CDBG, ESG, and this pot of dollars was really intended to help supplement the CBG, and also to help out the smaller agencies who couldn't qualify under the CBG or just really didn't have the capacity to do it. Yet, they were meeting some of the same priorities. And remember, we came to council back in to set the priorities.
That was back just before the summer?
Yeah, so that's when we asked the council, as we go into the new year, what would you like us to do? So these fall into that category, and, and so the dollar amounts may be a little bit smaller. We don't have the same constrictions that we, well, we don't have the same construction we have in CBG, because this is general fund funding.
So I would be happy to open it up for discussion on the human services applications, if you had any questions.
Thank you very much. So again, just to rehearse, set expectations, these are the recommendations, unless this is scheduled to be on our agenda on April the 18th, and so that we have this period between now and then, if there, if, if we're going to be lobbied by those who maybe weren't successful or for other reasons, we want to make tweaks to this proposal, we can do that. But if we do that, does that then begin a new waiting period, you know, start the notice period? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, Mayor Giles, that is correct. So there is a specific process that we have to follow for the federal funds. And so we are coming to you with the recommendations that we could discuss today, and you could opt to change them, modify them. But then, once we're finished today, it goes out for public comment. So if, say, in 15 days, we wanted to make some more changes, it would have to go out for another 30-day public comment period. And the plan and recommendations are due to HUD by May 15th.
Okay, April 18th is more than 30 days from now, so we have...
Well, you have to put, okay, these have to go out now, right? What's your, the April date is set, but you need 30 days to have the project sitting out there, right?
Correct.
So you've got to make, if you're going to make any changes, you have to make them before we post it out there, I guess.
When is that?
So it gets posted, I believe, on February 28th, for the 30-day comment period.
February?
Yeah, February 28th, and then it goes through March.
That still is more than 30 days.
Right, so there's a little slide in there.
So we've got some cushion built in here. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
So if we make any funding changes, Michelle, it subtracts from the amounts that's allocated to the current applicants, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, something has to give.
Well, I mean, we'd have to take some money, dollars, off of them.
Right.
And, and so, you know, personally, I wanted to lobby for domestic violence court and our city court. I know they didn't score as well, judges here, magistrate, and, and I think that's an important, you know, part of our community needs, human services. But then again, they, they asked for $140,000, and that's not going to happen. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but, you know, I'm sure they could use a little bit of funding, but then all of that would come from all the current funding thing. So that would be a further discussion. So Mayor, I'd just like to suggest that, and I don't know if the judge...
Well, Mayor, Councilman Freeman, I don't know how that happened. It shouldn't be in this, in this, in this request here. That's very, we, that's not how we do budgeting for the city general fund operations. That'll come through the discussions we're going to have in April, where every department comes and presents to you their upcoming budget. We don't put departmental requests in here. This really was intended for outside agencies that are working on all those priorities we just talked about, homelessness, workforce. That's what's intended for here. So we apologize that that should have not even made an application, because that's the process I'm going through right now. Well, and I think it's just someone new, but we, we would, because here's what would happen, right? If you're going to fund something like that, it takes it off the top.
Right.
And then every year, you've just reduced that amount, and that's not really, council can do what you want to do. That's a really not, this has not been intended, it's been the general fund version of the CDBG dollars, right? Where we find eligible-type CBG projects, but just because maybe the agency or the project, it's worthwhile, but it would get smothered in CDBG regulations or whatever. And so we allocated, we've set aside some dollars of the general fund to fund some of those kinds of projects. But they're usually very, like, time-specific, just like CBG, right? We're allocating it for that year for that purpose. You know, I'm assuming divested, violence court would, you know, we're not just going to do it for one year, and it really doesn't meet the kind of, I'm not trying to say it's a bad thing, but it doesn't meet this idea of a CBG eligible, right? Whereas trying to address similar types of qualifications with general fund dollars, if that makes sense.
The library one's different, since that's City of Mesa.
Where you, which one?
On the first of the human service funding screen, 19.
So Mayor Giles and Councilmember...
Yeah, well, it's the mobile library going into the neighborhoods. So, yeah, that's different.
So that's different than their budget funding?
Than an ongoing, recurring operations of the city, right?
So Ruth and Michelle, are you saying that the DV court should not have applied in this category?
I'm saying that.
You're saying that? I know. I put you on the spot. But, but for clarity, I mean...
We've never, we don't have departments making those kind, you know, operational, unless they can show, we, if a department comes in and says, we want to do something specific related to CDBG eligible neighborhoods or programs, then yes, we may consider that here. But that, again, it has to be kind of, that's why the mobile library fits in, because our idea is to take the library to our lower-income neighborhoods and go to the parks, go to the neighborhoods in the system. Domestic violence court, great, you know, probably a concept we need to talk about. We need to talk about, well, how does that fit in with all the activities we're already doing in the court, and what resources that are already there can be reallocated to assist that? So we will have that conversation when we have the general fund conversation with the council.
Very good.
And I just wanted...
So what you're telling me, you're going to fund the dollars out of the general?
We're going to consider it.
I want a record.
What I'm telling you is, there may be, there may be existing resources to fund that already.
Okay, very good. Then I'll reset my comments.
But no, I appreciate you bringing it up, but it's just, it's...
Well, this makes it complicated in a way.
Yeah, if you put it in, if we put it in here, then pretty soon, we're going to absorb all the money that was intended, and there's not, not this annual opportunity to assist the agencies, especially the smaller ones or projects that are just really, the CBG, CDBG regulations are so heavy sometimes, it just eats up the effort, right, for the program you're trying to provide. And that's why the general fund was allowed, you put, set aside the dollars to help facilitate them make that easier.
Okay, very good, thanks.
And I just wanted to mention, Mayor Giles and Councilmember Freeman, the difference in some of the applications is whether it's paying, you know, an ongoing staff salary or it's actually paying for, like, materials and different items to administer the service, whereas the staff salary is kind of ongoing.
You guys are good arbitrators for the judge over there.
We'll have to find a neutral third-party judge to have a conversation.
Well, I think that, I mean, the community court, veterans court, they're not being funded through this. So to me, this, that's not an indication that we're not going to be able to spend. The specialty courts, but, and I'll be an advocate for that, too, when it comes time for our budget discussions.
Right.
So given the, just timing of our meeting here, there's still a lot on our, on our agenda, and I know that Mr. Freeman and others might, I think, have an event later this morning, so we might have to, so, so let's try to wrap this up, I guess, is my point. Council, are we okay, just kind of as a consensus with this going forward, with staff recommendations as is, well, not just staff recommendations, but the, the very detailed process that this has all gone through? And, okay. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to not just you two ladies, but I know that the army of people that have been involved in this process. We please extend our appreciation to them.
Absolutely. I couldn't be here today without the staff who go through this entire process, so I appreciate all they do as well.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, how much time do we have? I just want to, if we can...
Well, Mr. Freeman, you have, you're hosting an event at your farm in like a half an hour, aren't you? Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Brady, how would you, do you want to...
Then let's jump. I know Brian doesn't put on a timer for anybody, but we'll, maybe we can...
Thank you.
When was the last time Brian wasn't bumped on the agenda?
So maybe we should drop down to 2C and 2D, Mayor, because those are coming, we can maybe cover some of 2B in the upcoming strategic plan with council. So let's jump, maybe we should jump to 2C and D.
Great, let's go to 2C. 2C, there's a presentation to provide direction on a few changes to our Mesa building code.
I'm a PR Director of Development Services, and I'm here with John Schefter, who's a building official, and also Deputy Director of Development Services. We do have a presentation to make minor modifications or amendments to the City of Mesa building code, and with that, I will pass it on to John to give you the presentation.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Yeah, brief, brief presentation, there's not a whole lot of changes here that are being proposed to Mesa's building codes.
And that one?
On that one, okay. Thank you. Okay. So back up one step, though. In February 2019, Mesa adopted the 2018 edition of the International Building Codes. Also a major overhaul, new codes entirely. What's being proposed is just a change to a couple of those sections. The entire addition of codes is not changing. And the 2018 codes have now become kind of ubiquitous throughout the valley. The state now is going to the 18 and the county and most of the cities. So we're consistent with them in being on the 18 codes. Which one makes little changes that are just considered updates for the purposes of clarification, adding some options for designers. Some are related to safety, and some synchronize our code with some of the other valley cities. There's no proposed changes to the fee structure or the fee schedule. So the primary changes are related to solar panel permits, pool barriers, and then text that aligns the codes. And what I mean by aligning the codes, for example, building code and plumbing code overlap somewhat in some sections. What we want to do is make sure that if you're looking at the building code and with the plumbing code, in that particular section, you're seeing the same text. So it's really just aligning the codes. It's not adding any requirements to the code. I'll get into each of these in just a little bit more detail here. Starting off with the solar panels. Currently, permits aren't required for solar panels in Mesa regardless of what size the panels are, nor does it matter whether it's a licensed contractor or not. What's being proposed is for the really large systems that are 10,000 square feet in aggregate area or larger, that a permit would be required. Reason being, we've had situations where a design came in and effectively, a, the design had 40, 50-foot array of panels wrapping around the perimeter of a building. This created safety concerns because it blocked off access to the building, where first responders couldn't approach the building or get to the rooftop. Now, fortunately, that designer happened to come to the city and ask for input. And so we worked with them, figured out a design that created access to the corners of the building to keep it safe. But what we recognize is that without a permit, that could very easily just been installed as is without any city input at all. So it's in order to try to prevent a situation, you know, that situation or something similar from happening when these systems get really large, again, 10,000 square feet or larger. On the other side of the spectrum, where not so much the large systems, but maybe homeowners, where they might install a system without a contractor. A lot of homeowners may not be familiar with the codes or electrical systems of that nature. And so it makes sense to have a permit required in that situation as well to make, somebody's checking to make sure the system's compliant with the codes and safe for the homeowner. Moving on to the pool barriers. The only change here is really to add options for pool barriers. And these changes are going to be similar to some of the other cities in the valley. For example, a self-closing, self-latching door with a latch that's 54 inches or higher would be acceptable as part of a pool barrier. 54 inches has been accepted nationally as deemed a height that's out of the reach of small children, which obviously the barriers are intended to protect. So this, again, aligns with Phoenix, Chandler, Buckeye. It's very common throughout the valley to have these same requirements. And this aligns Mesa with those requirements. Of course, it helps the pool builders and the homeowners have more options available.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question on that? We currently do allow barriers other than pool fences, self-closing, self-latching doors with higher handles. Sorry, are we just changing it to 54 inches from a different number? Is that the only change we're making?
We've been doing that via code modification, so we've been allowing that. It hasn't been in the code, but we've been recognizing it in other cities and allowing it for, since the code adoption. But this makes it in the code and so that it's straight across the board. No one has to ask for that as a request.
I guess I'm surprised. I recall being on this council a long time ago when we first adopted the pool barrier ordinance. And that was an option, you know, the self-closing, self-latching. The house that I live in now was built 20 years ago, but that's, that was allowed by the code. So I guess I'm just, we were just allowing people to do that even though it wasn't specifically in our code?
By request, the code modification process allows the city to.
Now it'll be in text.
Okay.
It will be in text.
I'm surprised, I thought it already was, so that's my mistake, yeah.
And no, you're correct. It was historically, it was removed, this brings it back, and it becomes part of the text now.
All right.
Once again.
Good to know, thank you.
Sure. And then the remaining changes really don't add any or take away any requirements. Again, there's some that have overlap. Some of the changes changed the sequence, the numbering, so that the sequences are correct in the code. There's really, it's just a cleanup of the code, if you will. And these changes, we've discussed these at the Developers Advisory Forum. We've sent out notices to the 300-plus emails that are to the contractors, developers, architects, engineers. We've discussed these changes with the Home Builder Association as well, Jackson Mole. And because there's really no significant change, any really, to home building, their position's effectively neutral. I'm happy to answer your questions on any of these topics.
And we're bringing these on, it's on the agenda for?
The 7th, for intro.
So you won't see it Monday, but the following. So we just want to get ahead of that and let you see what's coming, so.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Brady, do you think we have time for?
Let's do 2D, I think.
2D, I'm sorry. 2D is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed changes to the zoning ordinance related to drive-throughs.
Good morning, Mayor. Again, NAPR, and we have Rachel, who's going to give you the presentation. As you may recall, this has been a conversation that we've been having for a while now. And a couple of the council members have actually requested that we look into our zoning ordinance and see what we can do to basically strengthen the fiber of our communities. So that's why we are here today to make that presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council. So as you know, as part of planning's function, we are always looking at our built environment and looking at land uses and seeing how those impact each other and how citizens kind of interact with those elements. So today, we're here to talk to you about drive-through facilities. And really, as staff, what we have been doing is we have been considering where drive-through facilities are currently permitted and considering the impacts that those have, both on residential neighborhoods but also on surrounding businesses. So as part of this, we're looking at the location of those, but also the concentration of those uses. So this chart before you shows where drive-through facilities are permitted within the City of Mesa. So they are mostly within commercial districts. But as you can see, there is a variety of processes, depending on the zoning districts, that these have to go through. So in some districts, they're permitted by right. Others require a special use permit, and others require a council use permit. The majority of drive-through facilities that we see are in commercial districts. So that is where we have been kind of focusing and looking at the impacts of those. And when we, when we look at that, we really are going back to the fundamentals and thinking about what the purpose of those commercial districts are. So even though we have three different commercial districts, really the intent and the purpose of those is unique. So going into those, the first here is our neighborhood commercial district. And this is really intended to be small-scale commercial uses that really fit into the surrounding neighborhood. The surface area of these is intended to be much smaller, so a half-mile to a two-mile radius. They're supposed to be compatible in, you know, in the size and scale of the commercial development that is there with the surrounding neighborhood and to be able to provide a walkable, bikeable interaction, to provide services to that surrounding neighborhood. Then moving on from there, we also have a limited commercial district. The intensity of this is a little bit higher than the neighborhood commercial, so the service area is one mile to 10 miles. But this is still meant to be low-intensity retail and services. And once again, the intent is that the impact on the residential uses adjacent to them is minimal. Impacts of traffic are minimal. So keeping the intent and purposes of those districts into consideration and looking at the land use suitability of drive-through facilities. We know that for these districts, the intent is really to, you know, have commercial services that enhance walkability, bikeability, those connections to the neighborhoods and their aesthetics, and keeping them intact. So not creating significant barriers to those neighborhoods, such as, you know, traffic or safety concerns that you can't interact with those commercial centers. Some of the impacts, however, of drive-throughs is that you often see that they're large expanses of surface parking. We have noise from idling cars and their speaker boxes. We also have kind of some different issues as far as access. We usually have multiple access driveways, which creates conflicts with pedestrian and bicycle activity. We also have large parking areas facing the street and large setbacks that really distract from the goals of creating this walkable, interactable relationship to the surrounding neighborhoods. So staff has formulated some recommendations. And as this, what we are proposing today is that for the neighborhood commercial district, which is that that smaller scale, intended to be that smaller-scale commercial district, currently, drive-through facilities require a special use permit. And staff is recommending that those be prohibited in those neighborhood commercial districts. And then for the limited commercial districts, currently, drive-through facilities are permitted by right. And staff has recommended that they instead require a special use permit. Another item that we also are recommending is that we address the grouping or concentration of drive-through facilities. We have been seeing a lot of development applications come in recently where it is just kind of a string of drive-through facilities on frontages. And they basically act as auto courts or like food courts for drive-throughs. So what staff is recommending, that we limit the number of drive-through facilities that can be located adjacent to one another or at intersections. And the recommendation is that there be no more than three drive-through facilities next to each other or at an intersection. So with these proposed changes, it would have minimal impacts on the current zoning. So we would have to adjust our land use tables. We currently do have development standards for drive-through facilities, so that section would also be amended a little bit. But based on that, so based on council's kind of direction moving forward, our next steps with this would be to go to planning and zoning to have a study session with them either late March, early April. From there, to do some community engagement and outreach in May and June, and then start drafting these text amendments to bring back to you either fall or winter of this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury.
So drive-through facilities could be a bank, Walmart, pharmacy. Like, is that drive-through facilities or are we just talking about food here?
That's correct.
Walgreens, any of those, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, yes, we're correct. So any drive-through facilities, it's not just specific to fast food or restaurant uses?
Because I can think of like tons of intersections that have more than three currently. So we're just saying, moving forward, we wouldn't want more than three in an intersection. And what is defined as the intersection? Like, how far off of the intersection does that count?
Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, that is something that we would have to define when we start drafting those text amendments. But for an example, we currently do have a similar restriction as far as auto model of repair facilities. And at 600 feet off of the intersection is what that standard has used.
Okay. So the bullet point that says prohibit in the neighborhood commercial district, so there's no way then that any drive-through facility could be in a neighborhood commercial? Like, there's no exception, there's no permit, like, nothing, it just would be prohibited?
That would be the recommendation moving forward.
And how many drive-through facilities do we have currently in neighborhood commercials? How common is that? Fairly common or not very common?
Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, looking at the fact that there was an article that came out that said Mesa is the number-one city with the highest drive-through, my thought is definitely we do have significant drive-throughs in those neighborhoods. That may be one of the factors that led to we being recognized for that kind of statistics.
So, because I'm just thinking through, I mean, the idea here is that it disrupts parking lots, sidewalks, traffic, right? Is that, I mean, is that kind of?
Adjacent businesses.
Businesses next to it. I mean, if a business came through and had a better plan for their parking lot of how they would incorporate a better drive-through traffic or cars that it wouldn't impact, like, we still wouldn't allow that. I just, having six kids, drive-throughs are my best friend, right? When they were all little, I'd love to drive-through. So I'm just, they're not always a bad thing. And, but if they had, you know, ways to help some of those concerns, we still wouldn't allow it?
Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, so it's very important to look at the scale of the commercial activities. That's why in the presentation, we gave the three categories of scale. For the neighborhood commercial is not intended for drive-throughs. Those are really intended for walking, biking, those six kids biking and feeling very free to really walk to basically those locations. In a limited commercial, which goes a little bit further, we're saying those will be looked at on a side-by-side basis. So that's why we require a specific use permit. So it's not absolutely prohibited, but once you come, it will look at the site plan, context, and all that. But for those small, small neighborhood community, those are not intended for drive-throughs.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I love this, obviously. It's my district that's probably getting inundated with drive-throughs. You know, one of the things that we talked about that would kind of help alleviate your concerns is, you know, forcing the floor space or the pad to be larger, right? Because what's happening in District 6 is we're having McDonald's, Burger Kings, you know, popping up on every single corner. And that's not what the community wants. But we don't have anything that we can go back and say, "Okay, Mr. Developer, we don't want a McDonald's or a Burger King or a Jack in the Box. We want residents that our citizens can sit down at and enjoy a meal." And so we had even talked about increasing the floor space, because most of your fast-food drive-throughs are only about 1,400 square feet. So what if we pushed it up to 2,000 to 4,000 square feet? So we're forcing them to overbuild the size of their facility, which really would take McDonald's and Burger King and those guys out of the picture, right? Because they wouldn't want to build a 3,000-square-foot floor space for something that they only need 1,400 feet for. But I think one of the things, because I know that like Dutch Bros and places like that are very popular in my district. So I don't know if I want to limit those types, but I do want to limit the fast foods. You know, so somehow coming up with, and that's why I think maybe a square footage kind of would work. People like the salad digos and stuff, but they don't like the McDonald's, they don't like the Burger.
Can't discriminate between.
Right, and so the only way that I can think of how we can, we either, you know, limit all drive-throughs and just make it all drive-ups, or we have to carve out some type of way to make that differentiation to the things that we do want in our community versus the things that we don't.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, looking at example, District 6 being a good example, there is absolutely very limited neighborhood commercial zoning in District 6. What are you looking at most likely are more the limited commercial, which will require specific use permits, so we can look at them by, on a case-by-case basis? Most of the neighborhood commercials are really in our older neighborhoods and needs revitalization.
Infill.
Infill, absolutely, infill. And those are the places where drive-throughs are mostly not appropriate for those locations or at those locations.
Well, I even think, like, if we just made everything a CUP and you kind of force it to come to council, right? Because the council member in their district knows better what their community wants. And so, you know, it kind of goes back to what we did with the storage facilities, right? We started getting inundated with storage facilities, so we forced a CUP. And that kind of now limits the amount of storage facilities because they know that if they come into council, we're probably not going to approve another storage facility going in.
Well, and I just wanted, I mean, that's why, that's why I have an issue with like the pharmacies or the banks, because I don't see those drive-throughs causing the same problems as In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A, right? Which, we could get those.
Those were the two.
Those were the two. But I mean, like, they should have to have a bigger space because their drive-throughs are crazy and insane. So, but I mean, I don't, I just don't feel like the same. So, but I mean, I don't, I just don't feel like the same thing should be said for a pharmacy or a bank. Like, those drive-through facilities are important and needed and they are, they're different. So, but I guess if you can get more than three with a special use permit, then that would fix that, I guess, but.
Mayor, Councilmember, I know since the pandemic, one of the discussions we've been having is the difference between a drive-through and a drive-up window. So that may be something that we can go back and look at defining and coming up with a distinction between those two and see how it can be incorporated into the changes.
What is that difference? Don't they all have a drive-up window?
Well, the drive-through window, one of the things, you have to have a speaker box. You have to order and go there whilst with a drive-up window. Like, some of the big restaurants, they have a drive-up, drive-up window that you just go and pick up your food.
Oh, I see.
So the, sometimes your orientation of the drive aisles inside the development is a bit different. But it's, we have to look at it more and see if we could come up with any distinction between the two.
Mr. Ready.
Yeah. My comment is, you know, especially on the West Side where there's, I think, inundation in some areas of just fast food restaurants just coming on top of each other. I think for, for me was just to have options, to have a say in the process, not just have them just go through and, and be allowed, right? So I think that's what I've heard from some residents as far as, you know, are we getting just, just fast food restaurants and, and corners that we already have three of them or four of them in some of these areas? And, and so just having a, a tool to have a discussion, to be able to say, you know, is this a proper use of, of this corner that is important? I think for, for neighbors and the small businesses around there to have another fast food restaurant. I think that's, that was the, the conversation that I had with planning is just having an option to have a say, right? I think that's an important piece. And how, you know, I think in the West Side, we do have more neighborhood commercial pieces. And I think that's, you know, identifying if we, it's prohibited immediately or, or SUP. I'm either or, but I, I do feel a need that we need options, right? And this is, I think, provides us an option to have a discussion on what's the proper use of this available land, especially on the West Side where we don't have a lot of available land there, like the East, East Side. And so having that discussion is an important process, I think, for residents and small businesses in, in our area.
I just thought of something. Since I'm, my district borders Gilbert, what do you do at an intersection where the South part is Gilbert and the North is Mesa?
Well, we're never going to see the applications from them.
Well, I know, but like, because they have several intersections that are full of drive-throughs. So I mean, that wouldn't, we, we could keep three on our side.
Let's look into that and we'll come up to you.
Just, I, I mean, that's, that's an issue all the way down Baseline, so.
Well, and I think to Councilmember Reddy's point, I mean, you, you know, when, I remember, a, a good example is Cadence, right? So we went to, and staff went to a, a community meeting with Cadence when they first started talking about when they, what they were going to do with their commercial piece. Every single resident in there said, please don't bring more fast food. And the two things they led with first, McDonald's and right next door Burger King. And then we went over to Signal Buttes, which in Guadalupe or Hampton, which is in Councilmember District's, Councilmember Luna's district now, same exact thing. What they lead with, five drive-throughs. Five drive-throughs on a pristine piece of, of dirt that really is going to be your focus when you're coming into Mesa from the East. Is that really what we want to portray as you enter our city, is that we're a city of fast food? And that's kind of what the developers are doing. Because, you know, if it's allowed by zoning, we have no input. We, we can't deny them the ability to be there. And I think, you know, from our, to protect our citizens and, and to help build character within our community, we should have a say and our citizens should have a say in how we develop. It shouldn't be just because they meet the zoning requirements. We should have an ability to stop the design or to stop that type of development if that's not what the community wants. And right now, we don't have that ability.
Further comment. I, I do think, you know, based on the pandemic, I, I do think drive-throughs played a, certainly a role for businesses, right? To keep going. And so having discussion on, you know, drive-ups or, I don't know what you call them officially, those, those windows that you can hand or pick up your food. You know, those things, I, I think having those options as far as, as we have these, this, these discussions in our outreach is an important process of how the industry can innovate into something, but not just be, you know, allowed just a drive-through immediately, right? So I think that's an important aspect, you know, as we realize over the last two and a half, three years. You know, I have kids too and drive-throughs are easy to get foods, right? And, and you normally didn't contact any, anybody. And so you, you see a value, but I think it's an important aspect to have a discussion on some areas to, we, if we already have enough drive-throughs, like, how, how do we, how do we use the land available that is there to maximize more, best use, right, of that area, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, this is where we're going to look into the square footage as well. Because with a square footage would all help to really kind of get to the end goal of what we're looking at. So you can have a minimum square footage that will allow a drive-up window. So that will kind of in a way regulate certain type of uses and all that, so.
Well, I, I believe this is a recommendation that we initiate this process that we'll go through PNC.
And there'll be more to come and opportunities to discuss this down the future, not long.
So I'm sure there's a lot of folks in the business community and others that will want to have their voices heard on this. So we're just kick off the process, so. Counsel, we're good with this going forward? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Brian, I think we've, we've been bumped.
We may, we may bring Brian back maybe at the, from Monday. We, we don't have another study session, so maybe we'll 15 minutes early in the meeting and do it then.
Sounds good. All right. Well, then moving forward, next item on our agenda, item three is to acknowledge receipt of various minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Just for the record, we've lost Mr. Freeman, but that was unanimous. Yes. Yes, well, and our, this meeting's run long and, and he did have another. I'm, I'm going to join him at his event here as soon as this meeting's over. Next agenda item, item four, is current event summary and conferences attended. Council members, would you like to share anything? Mr. Luna.
Just really quickly, if you're driving down McDowell Road between Greenfield and Higley, you'll see a series of murals that commemorate Falcon Field Airport, starting from the 1940s to Boeing as well as MD helicopters. And of course, we wanted to celebrate Mesa's past with Falcon Field and their contribution towards the board effort. And we also want to celebrate the current. And of course, we have Boeing helicopters, MD helicopters there. And we, and we don't know what our future is, but we know that they're our children. And so we have a number of STEM students from Red, Red Mountain High School, as well as some elementary students depicted there. There are beautiful murals. And so I want to thank Corinne Nystrom and her staff for, for putting this together and it's something to be proud of. So please stop by when you have an opportunity, or drive by, but drive very slow. Or you can get off an MD helicopter and walk, walk it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of positive comments on, on those murals, Mr. Luna. Thank you for working so diligently on that project. Ms. Pillsbury.
Just wanted to mention that February is Kindness Month. It's almost over, but you have one more week to do kind acts of service. And we put some Mesa kindness cards at the Mesa Public Library, the main library and the Red Mountain branch that you could go pick up and write a kindness note to someone and try to spread kindness through our city.
Great. Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor.
I'd like to acknowledge that on this past week, on the 18th, in downtown Mesa, we had Golden Downtown Mesa Day, recognizing 10 businesses that have been in downtown more than 50 years. In fact, the ones that we honored are more than 70 years or more. I'll just go through the quick list. I know there's more yet to celebrate. But the ones that we celebrated on, I think it was Friday, is Lamb Shoe Repairer, Pomeroy's Men's Store, Dixon's Jewelers, Mesa Typewriter Exchange, Pete's Fish and Chips, Lenhart's Hardware, Milano's Christmas Flowers, the Nile Theater and El Charro Restaurant. So we often celebrate the new groundbreakings and new things going on. But I would like to acknowledge and celebrate the businesses that have been in our downtown for 70 years or more. Also, yesterday, we did have a groundbreaking at the Commons of Mesa, which is on Second Avenue between Robson and McDonald's for some garden-style or courtyard-style apartments. There's 12 three-story buildings with 124 residential units. So we look forward to have some more housing choices in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor. Those were both really impressive, great events. And I'll just have to, I have to point out Nile Theater, 98 years. El Charro, 100 years in Mesa. So it's, and the, the point is that, that, that very authentic feel is still alive and well in downtown Mesa. And even the new businesses that are coming here have the same mindset. You know, the, it's, they help each other and, and they're going to be around for a long time. So that was an important event. Other comments, Counsel?
I need to, to note that I want, I need to thank everyone that was involved in, in the, the state of the city that was held last Tuesday. I, I wrote some things down just so I'd make sure I don't overlook thanking anyone. But last Tuesday, the Mesa Chamber of Commerce hosted, helped me hopes our, our eighth State of the City address. It really is a very large production. For those of you who, who were there, will appreciate that and one of our signature events as a community. I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone involved because it really was very much a, a heavy lift with a lot of people participating. Thank you specifically to Glenn and Lily and Brittany and Rihanna at Channel 11 and to Casey and Priscilla and Melissa from, from my office. And Mr. Butler did a lot of work on this as well. They literally spend months planning the event and every year I'm, I'm, I think we're all blown away by just the quality of the production that, that these folks put together. So again, thanking everybody from the Public Information Office, the Convention Center, the Chamber of Commerce, the DMA, Channel 11. There really is, our in-house talent is really quite impressive. And I've heard, and I think probably everyone here has heard a lot of compliments about the quality of the production. So thank you to everyone involved. If you weren't able to attend or tune in live, it is available to watch on the, the city's YouTube channel. And I encourage you to do that. It's a great recap of some of the successes that we've experienced as a community over the last year. Thank you. Anything else to add to that, Counsel, before we move on?
Brian was a good judge.
Yes. Yeah, Brian Nissen, I'd be right. Thank you. I knew I'd forget somebody. Brian Nissen helped with some, some video production as well and, and his talent is, is obvious. If there's not anything else, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, we will be meeting on Monday, February 28th. I think we will bring Brian for the study session for that, before that meeting. And then we'll have the council meeting after that. I'd also invite the Counsel, if you haven't had an opportunity in the city manager's update from last Thursday, to go back to that, to review the background or the information we've given you for the agenda for the March 3rd study session, the strategic planning. We have, in the update, there's a lot of links to the present, or some of the presentations and the information. Probably most important, the assignment for the Counsel, if I dare say to you, is that the last part of strategic planning is a section called Now, Next and Beyond. So it's an opportunity for the Counsel to share ideas of topics you would like to just have the Counsel discuss. Now would be projects or topics that would occur in the next six to nine months. Next would be 12 to 18 months. And beyond would be something that would take place beyond that. So just an opportunity for the Counsel to share with your colleagues some of your interest and topics you might have discussed. So just want to share it with you today, but there's more information in that city manager update that talks about this and provides you that information. Also shares with you the current strategic priorities. We're not planning on spending a lot of time on those, but they're there for you to review. We'll cover them quickly. If the Counsel really wants to spend time revising, adding, deleting, we'd probably do that in another meeting. But we just want to start off with that. And it gives you information of the other topics that we're going to share with you. Again, it is, I think we've now finalized it for sure. We are going to be at the studios. We're going to have to bring our own furniture. Bring your own chair? No. We'll, we'll bring the furniture over there and we'll have breakfast and we'll start around. The breakfast will be available shortly after 7:00. We won't start till 7:30, but just in case you want to get some of ID before then. So anyway, all that information is in the city manager update, but I just want to bring that to your attention before next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very important meeting. And just to state the obvious, it'll, it'll be as impactful as the amount of preparation that, that seven of us put into it before we come to that meeting. So, and I know that everyone, I'm talking to myself. I know everyone is going to come very well-prepared for a productive meeting, so thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury, seconded by Ms. Duff. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.